Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
There.
Ms. Perkins.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
All right, council, you received the minutes from the July 21 meeting and the comments, changes to our motion.
Motion to approve the July 21 minutes.
Second. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Standing.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
And you also received current expenses. Any questions?
A question. Fifteen thousand dollars to the Madison County General Fund.
It's for the Madison County Prosecutor.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the expenses submitted.
Second.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Going to add something to the agenda here this evening. We had council here, we had a BCA meetings scheduled, and we had a couple of our guys that were not sworn in yet. We can talk about that later, but I want to do that now. So, um, you put your names on here first. Thank you for your patience. All right. Nick, you want to come up first? Thank you for being here, and certainly we'll just get to the center here. Thank you for your service today and your continuing willingness to serve. Appreciate it. So if you would just repeat after me. I, Nick Christopher, being a resident of Plain City, do hereby swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and the laws governing the village of Plain City, Ohio. to the best of my ability as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So help me God. Thank you. Thank you. And I need you to sign there. And I will sign that. We'll get you a copy, all right?
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Todd, thank you for your willingness to serve on BZA. Appreciate that you, of course, served here and are willing to continue. So if you'd like. Yes, it's a little bit different, isn't it? Yeah. All right. If you'll repeat after me. I, Todd Skidmore.
I, Todd Skidmore.
Being a resident of Plain City.
Being a resident of Plain City.
Do hereby swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States
to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
and the laws governing the village of Plain City, Ohio.
and the laws governing the village of Plain City, Ohio.
to the best of my ability as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So help me God. Thank you. All right. Because we have several visitors here this evening, I want to go ahead and move through the reports quickly. I'd like to just give my condolences to Jim, you and your family, along with your son. Renee, do you have anything? And Chief?
Just a couple items. Officer Greenbaum and myself attended the Advanced Tactical Training Course. It was sponsored by the Ohio State Highway Patrol. All the officers from the agency are going to go through this. I want to thank the Highway Patrol for extending this out to us, particularly Marty Flora at the Ohio State Highway Patrol out of Post 49. This was a good one-day training, which had the officers, well, Phillip and I first to start with, involved with emergency rescue for officers, down officer training with tourniquets, solo engagement firearm situations inside of schools, and additional building searches and felony stops. So again, this is what they're putting everybody through the Highway Patrol in, and they extended to us, and we certainly took them up on this offer. Additionally, I attended the Partners in Education Meeting in Union County. This was hosted by Judge Charlotte Eufinger. This is an annual meeting regarding the education as it relates to dealing with juveniles as they go through the court. As this happens, Union County has a project where the parents as well have to go through a training session. So this was just an educational briefing on what the parents have to go through during that training. Also, I attended the Union County Advisory Meeting Board, and also the retired Dodge Durango did sell on gov deals. So it sold, it met the reserve by a dollar, so, and it sold for thirty-two oh five. So that's all I had to report.
The reserve was thirty-two oh four.
Yes. And that's not given, so we've thought we was going to have to put it on again because at the very last day someone put an extra bid in and bumped it up, so. That from Arkansas, a gentleman from Arkansas, he's going to fly in and pick it up, so.
That's real police car.
That's all I have.
All right, you guys straight up on.
Just a few things. We did receive our new chipper and it is parked out back for anyone who would like to view it this evening. We've been working on painting stop bars at crosswalks, especially in school zone areas before school gets started. Currently working on constructing the new salt storage facility. And also I want to thank Be the Church for their work that they performed yesterday around the village specifically for us. They built four new picnic tables, four new basketball back stops, and also painted the curbs in the uptown. We provided the material for them and they provided the labor. Full will be going to evening and weekend hours only starting on August 20th, and will be closing after Labor Day. We also had something on gov deals, which it did not sell, so it is reposted. We did have a winning bidder. He came to get the vehicle and it was in not as good of condition as he thought it would be in, so we had to repost the vehicle. So hopefully it'll go through this time. And that's all I have, unless there's any further questions.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Those are both ten?
Nothing. Nothing on that. Just one thing on Park. If it's okay with council and mayor, next, at the next meeting, the Park Committee would like to come in and just kind of process steam pressures. And I believe Kevin was saying that the folks from the Steam Thresher Show are going to come in as well, so we can just kind of see what, how, what things we can tighten up, improve on, any concerns we might have, concerns they might have, all of that. So if it's okay with everyone, we can maybe have that to the agenda the next time for the 25th, and we can go into more detail.
Sean, we had talked about perhaps looking at what it would cost to build another diamond in Park. Do we have any idea on that yet?
We don't know that. I don't think we even got to that on the agenda. We spent a lot of time on the steam pressures that night. But it's still something we could talk to that the baseball season's over, and I think if there's a need, we could talk to them. What do you guys think? Something we want?
Did the village build the other diamonds, or did the baseball association build those?
I'm thinking baseball association, but it's going backwards, and I believe that's the answer.
Yeah, and I just want to give the idea of what it costs, and then we can approach PCABA to see if they're interested in helping us do it, or depending on how much it costs to do it altogether. Obviously, I don't think they can do it at this point without our approval. And having spoken to several of the guys at PCABA who are higher up in the organization, they've all expressed interest in having another diamond. It's just a matter of cost. I don't know what it will cost.
They research it and then connect to the Park Committee.
The kids could have fundraisers. The kids could have fundraisers.
I would think we're, the committee would be open to it, someone who created a park, a baseball diamond.
My thought was if we could get rid of Pony altogether, and we could probably put two diamonds where Pony's at, if we re, you know, move things around a bit, so. And that also would do several good things, which I think, you know, for example, if we had all the home plates kind of where Kaiser's at, and have two other diamonds going out where Pony's at, concession stand would then be centrally located, that would probably help concession stands. What's that? Which one? Pony is the southernmost one?
Is there still girls softball league?
There's still girls softball, absolutely. Pony's not specific to girls softball.
Yeah, but where would the girls play if they were all baseball diamonds?
Well, there's, they're all same. Yeah, this would give potentially more place for girls and boys to play.
So are you sure they're all multifunctional? Because I've never seen girls play on Kaiser Field.
Well, they haven't, because it's not multifunctional. The PCAB won't let them.
So is that true? Are all they all? Because I thought the mound was a little bit raised for baseball.
Yeah, on Kaiser, the mound is raised. On Barker and on Pony, it's not raised. And those are the two that they play softball on, and different age groups on, you know, each. The older groups play on Pony. Pony has basically pegs built up because it's a bigger field. So it's made to go from everything from, I think, I think they haven't even marked out from eight U all the way up to fifteen for baseball. So you go everywhere from the shortest distance up to the ninety-foot full, full distance for a base, for base paths.
So should we begin formally request that they take a look at it, or?
I'll talk to them.
Okay.
Number of issues that are coming up for, that I've touched on. Number one, talking to John Jordan regarding some changes to the zoning code for enforcement. And we'll bring that up to planning and zoning. The other issue is dealing with, we've got, we've received proposals from a number of insurance carriers for our liability coverage. We had a meeting last week with one of them. The other issue is the leg hole trap legislation that we'll talk about today. And also there's an issue, or certainly there's an issue that was raised in an email, I guess, from his resident regarding firearms in the park. And those are issues, I don't know if that was going to be subject of discussion tonight or not. Don't get wait. Other than that, that's pretty much all I have.
I don't have anything on that yet. Is that next week? All right, BCA.
Oh, we meet on the 18th.
All right, CIC?
Meeting scheduled for Tuesday the 19th. I can't remember the time he said. Was it six thirty or seven?
Six thirty.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Six thirty next Tuesday?
That's a work session.
Yeah.
Hey Bob.
That's everybody.
I know. I just, I submit my reports to upcoming writing, so we'll be covered both ways. I just realized a conflict the other day, so.
Jim, fire.
Next week.
Okay. And Upco is on our list. Did you remember?
Farmers Market's going great. It's fully booked, and we've got a lot of vendors that are selling out every week. Sounds like it's doing really well. Car show coming up August 23rd. Everybody mark your calendars, be there. And then Run Walk, I believe, the 26th, the last, the fourth Saturday in September. Executive Board Meeting next Tuesday at, I believe, the library or? Grub House, Grub House, okay. I'm not going to be there, that's why.
John, you mentioned before that they were, that Upco's looking into wipe by the glass. Is that still something that's happening?
It's still, it is back on hold, because this is something that's going to take probably five or six months ahead of time to get it onto the ballot. So really, really don't want to look at doing it as a primary issue. Would rather do it as a general election issue, just because the better the turnout, the more likely to pass the issue. That's still sort of just hanging out there in the works. We're, we're, we're working toward it. It's taking a while, so.
All right. So we have some visitors this evening, and, um. Are you, are you two guys wanting to stay for the full meeting? I'm sorry. I'm looking behind you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to leave. I was trying to.
If somebody wants to go and check it out, we can explain some things or whatever.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, so John, you're on as wanting to speak. Is that for Upco?
Actually, no. It was regarding the pending trap legislation. And really, all I wanted to do was express my opposition to any sort of legislation that's going to require the citizens to contract with a professional exterminator. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not even going to get into the right, wrong, or indifference of the leg hole traps, or live traps, or anything like that. But, but there is, there is a vermin problem in this town. The feral cats, as they're getting neutered and clipped, don't seem to be quite the issue that they were five, 10 years ago. But, you know, we had, we had raccoons kill several of our chickens earlier this spring. Raccoons and skunks getting into our garden and really making a wreck of it. And, I mean, we have to be able to do something to control it, and, and there are several places nearby that, that are harboring, I think, these vermin. There was one house on Gay Street that was actually condemned by the Madison County Health Department years ago. Because I, I mean, I remember, I remember when Amy participated in, in the drive, went door to door, getting petitions signed and everything to get it condemned, and then.
I think it was conditional though, and they made, they fixed it.
Well. It's never been fixed. They fixed a hole in the roof, and that's it. It's still an abandoned house. And if you could look at it, you, you'll see it's not been fixed. It was never fixed. But, but it was removed from, the condemnation order was removed from it, according to the Board of Health at the okay or the approval of this council. Yes.
That's on Gay, right? You want on Gay?
Yeah. There's many entrances into the foundation of that house and into the bottom of that house, and they're still coming and going from that house. So there's other places that are harboring these animals also. So at this point, it's pretty much a huge problem in town. So to ask people to get professional to do something about that when it is now a huge problem. There's many buildings, there's many people now that are harboring, harboring these animals. We have, a lot of people have a problem with that, just not, just not John and I. So it would be an expensive proposition at this point for folks to do that.
Thanks.
All right, Joey?
We're from Public Works. Just wanted to take a little time to thank council and you, mayor. The equipment that has been purchased goes a long way for us. You know, just wanted to throw it out there and let you guys know that we do appreciate it. And it's definitely going to make our jobs a lot easier. Myself, you know, I know I've got two kids to go home to. The new equipment's definitely safer. Just wanted to thank you guys and let you know that it's not going unnoticed, so.
That extends to Ryan Huff and Austin Flotter also expressing their thank yous also. Thank you again, guys.
Thank you.
And if there's any questions, you know, we'll hang out if you guys want to take a look at it. Pretty, pretty big difference in what we had, and I think it's, I think it's a good move. So just wanted to thank you guys again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Joe Gold?
It's the leg trapping again. I would like to see the village pass something that bans the leg traps. Now, if somebody wants to do a live trap, which we do with our cat organization, what's to say you can't get a permit and state what you are trapping, why you are trapping? With the Black and Orange Cat Foundation, we're trapping cats to neuter and spay, get their shots, and it's a good thing. However, somebody else might not be doing it for the right reasons. Say you want to trap for a groundhog or something, and he needs a permit for it, you know what he's doing it for. And it's not just to be a sport and be mean, you know what I'm saying? And I have, in the past, called for prices on, I think it was critter control too, because I've noticed all the raccoons, skunks behind our shop where we live. It's quite expensive, but if the village wants to take something like that on, I can get you prices.
Take on?
If you think there's too many critters in the town.
Did the village take on that task?
I know they will bring the traps out, set them up for you. They'll come out and check them, or you can check them and call them. If there's something in the trap, they will remove it. And I went the distance on finding all this out, but then I didn't have the heart to do it. That's just me, so. But the leg traps, I really, I can't see a need for them in this town. I really don't see a need for it.
Thank you. All right. So we can jump to the conversation later. Let's move to, um, visitors, Mr. Miller and Mr. Carter who appear this evening.
I'm Brian. I'm, Chris Miller has his presentation. We're here, we met with Kevin last week, and turned in a proposal if the village wants to move forward based on our presentation we did last month. And just here to answer any questions, if there's any questions on that.
Sure. I can introduce Mr. Miller. He is an attorney that we met with, with Brian, him, my office, Kevin and I. And he explained what he did for them and, and different, different various circumstances that we might be able to pursue. He deals with private and public agencies in his work with, you know, like the Ohio Public Utilities Commission, and the FCC, and other services to help speed along the process. So I'd have him just talk to us for a little while and explain what he can do.
Well, Mayor and Council, and I promised Councilmember Perkins that I would be free. That's not my nature, so. And this is one of those, those topics that, you know, I can allow an nauseam, so if you guys start to drop off, I'll try to pick up on the clip. A little bit about myself, to see kind of who I am. I'm a partner of a law firm, Ice Miller. And it's not me, by the way. I'm not that Miller. He's long deceased, but I get credited with it a lot. I practice in Columbus. I've been practicing there for about 15 years. We merged with Ice Miller, our firm is Schottenstein's, Ochs and Dunn, which you may be more familiar with. We merged about two and a half years ago now, and we have two offices in Chicago, one downtown, one in the suburbs. We have a large office in Indianapolis of about 200 lawyers. We have about 75 lawyers, I think, here now in town. And then we have an office in Cleveland and one in Washington, DC. My original sort of genesis of my career is I was an assistant city attorney for the city of Dayton. And long story, I won't bore you with all the details, but because I was the youngest guy in the office, and it was right after the Telecommunications Act of 96, my boss, the city attorney, pulled me into some meetings and said, "We want you to be responsible for all the telecommunications issues, all the utility issues." And I, you know, I said to him, "Why?" Because it's not what I do. And he said, "Well, you're the youngest guy in the office, and you understand technology. Nobody else will." I don't know if that's true, but apparently I've made a career out of it, so it's been a little interesting. So I came to Columbus, actually, to practice with a gentleman who was a crab round law firm at the time, who moved to Schottenstein when we started a public law practice group there. I left the city and came, and I've been working at Schottenstein ever since, and then now Ice Mo. My practice is predominantly focused on government agencies and public utilities, and it's sort of an interesting mix of both. I've worked with a lot of communities over time, and I'll get to it in a minute. I'll get to kind of the thumbnail sketch of where we are in regards to state of Ohio's law and right-of-way. Working on comprehensive right-of-way regulation, administration, management, and control ordinances. I've spent a lot of time working with the utilities and for my political subdivision clients in regards to relocating things, moving things, planning, coordination. It's, you know, it's, it's one of those things that in today's world, with the multiple types of infrastructure that are available in the community, the need for the companies to deploy these kinds of things, the fact that we want this for our residents, and we want them to have the best services available, putting all that stuff together and trying to coordinate so we lessen the impact, if possible, on the public offers in regards to what the public has to pay to manage and administer the right-of-way are, I think, relatively important. And so over the course of the last 15 or 18 years, I guess, I have been working, and it's a large part of my practice, with political subdivisions, working on comprehensive right-of-way control ordinances. So jurisdictions have rules and regulations in place when utilities want to do things in the right-of-way that let you, as a jurisdiction, have a set of rules that makes sense to the jurisdiction. The attempt is there to try to neutralize the cost, in other words, so the jurisdiction doesn't have to pay extra cost for those folks doing that work, and at the same point in time, work on some planning issues. So on a going-forward basis, what you see is, instead of seeing multiple cut, street cuts in a, in a new street, you see one street cut. And one of the things that I had an opportunity to talk to Administrator Bond and Councilman Perkins about with the folks from Mike Carter's shop, was just sort of planning issues and what we've done for communities like LeBopolis. And I can tell you that I've worked with communities as small as LeBopolis and as large as the city of Dayton, and put together some comprehensive ordinances for them that I like to leave, and I think the clients believe have helped them do a lot of positive things in regards to manage and administration of right-of-way, and also try to get to a point where there's no additional cost to the jurisdiction in regards to the, the work that is being done in the right-of-way by not just the utilities, but anybody who invades the services of the right-of-way. And what we've discovered over time in some of the larger, some of the older jurisdictions, more importantly, is there's infrastructure out there today that sits in these rights of way that the services are effectively abandoned, the companies don't exist anymore. And worst-case scenario is a circumstance where we've got a public improvement, we have to get in there, and we find out all this stuff's left over, and there's nobody to go to to deal with it. As a specific example, there was a situation in the city of Dayton a number of years ago where we had to do a public improvement, and they encountered what appeared to be a large tar pit. Nobody knew what it was. They'd never seen it before. So they shut down the entire project for two weeks. It cost the city over six figures to deal with the issue. Found out it was, it was a Dayton Power and Light predecessor, actually, Dayton Power and Light. It was, it was a gasometer, which is apparently some sort of strange gas regulation system that they had put in place in the 20s. And there was no records on file or anything like that. So one of the things that we do through this ordinance process is try to make sure that we get mapping protocols in place. So when there are things like this are done in the future, 10, 15, 20 years from now, we know what's there. And really, what I've determined and discovered with my work with public service directors and administrators is that we really don't know what's out there, and trying to find that on an ad hoc basis, try to document it, is difficult. And trying to find that on an ad hoc basis, try to document it, it's difficult. What I can tell you too, and I think it's important to understand, is the paradigm, and I said I'd get to sort of the state of law. Approximately 10 years ago, we had a circumstance where the utilities determined that they wanted to come in and have some legislation passed that would effectively remove the ability to manage and control the public rights away, away from the political subdivisions. What happened in that instance was that it was essentially law-rolled or caked onto a biennial budget bill and it was passed. So at that moment, at that passage, subsequent to being effective, what happened was is all the local jurisdictions in Ohio essentially had the ability to regulate, control folks in the public right-of-way, their streets, which is our largest asset and our largest investment, taken away. The city of Dublin, the city of Upper Arlington, with my law firm, sued the state of Ohio in Franklin County Court of Columbus Police. And after a long and debated process and a little bit of wait, we ended up with a 110-page decision from the Columbus Police Court, which is unusual, pretty long. And the bottom line was that the court determined that it was unconstitutional to do it the way they did it procedurally and that it was also unconstitutional under Ohio law because obviously that was something that was reserved specifically for the local jurisdictions to control. And so at that point in time, literally the next day, the utilities went back across the street and submitted the same bill on its own, so it wasn't attached to another bill. And we had another fight. And what happens in things like this, I always tell people, I'm familiar with this, saying that a camel is a resource designed by a committee. And so what we had is we had a bunch of negotiating going on with a number of people, both in the utility industry, the political side, the municipal league and others. And what we ended up with was this odd camel, and that's what we have today, and that's the 4939 Higher Rights Code. Basically what that says is that the local political subdivisions have the ability to regulate their public right-of-way as they see fit. But when it comes to charging someone money to be there, that, that specific item is actually reserved for challenge to the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. And so what we've had subsequent to that are some decisions coming out of the Public Utilities Commission. The Seminole case, which was the Dayton case, which was a case that I was involved in, basically where there was a determination about what you can and can't charge folks out of the right-of-way. Again, I see you guys are nodding, I'm sorry for all the details, but the practical reality is that what's really certainly left to the jurisdiction is the ability to control the way folks occupy and use the right-of-way on an ongoing basis. Construction rules and things like that. What is still left up in the jurisdiction is the costing issue, but that is something that can be challenged. I noticed I did look at the current code and it's not uncommon and it's pretty standard. It's things that people have updated a number of years ago and we charge a flat $50 fee to do certain things in the right-of-way. But the practical reality is that if someone wants to come in and do a significant improvement, whether the utility or anybody really invading the surface of the right-of-way, there's an engineering cost. You folks have to have your engineering team review. And I will, anecdotally, I'll say that I'm going to guarantee you don't get that cost covered. And that's the kind of thing that I think you want to try to do, is find a way to make sure that it's essentially a zero cost to jurisdiction to have to have somebody come in and do work in that way. We also have to make sure, and this is something that I always suggest and we always put into a place with right-of-way ordinances, is to make sure that there is a continuing obligation of whoever does that work for a significant period of time to come in and repair those things. And as you know, with this last winter, as you can imagine, getting balls in the potholes, I know I think I've got a rim that has to be replaced and I've got at least one tire that I don't have anymore. So that kind of stuff happens, but what it ends up being is it really ends up being something that jurisdictions end up paying for. If in the future with mapping and with rules, if we can identify whose street cut that was, we can then identify who created the problem and then go to them and say, "We have to have you, A, fix this and, B, you're going to have to come in and maintain it for a period of time so we don't have these problems on a continued basis." There are things like police and other public service, time that needs to be spent for jobs that go on in the jurisdiction during construction. And those are the kinds of things that traditionally jurisdictions have sort of just done. And what we're suggesting is there's a mechanism, a model, a way to do that so those kinds of costs aren't actually incurred by the jurisdiction, those kinds of costs are actually incurred by the cost accuser. And this goes not just for those folks who have systems in the right-of-way or public utilities, but anybody really that would cause damage to the public right-of-way. So the way that we recommend that these documents be set up is in a way where you have a right to occupy the other system and every time you do construction, there are certain permitting processes. And in addition, if someone wants to do some work in the street in a nonutility, and if one of the examples I always cite to folks is, you know, you've got an auto repair shop who owns something on each side of the street and they want to put a fiber optic line or something like that, you've got a circumstance where those folks are going to have to come in and get a construction permit and pay those same costs that somebody who was a utility would have had. The other thing that I think that I had the opportunity to talk to the council member, the administrator about, was economic development issues. And really, on a going-forward basis, what we're seeing, especially with some of our clients, in the city of Dublin, we've done work for them for a number of years. And as I think many of you know, they have this very sophisticated fiber optic system in Dublin called Dublin. And it's that kind of thing that they've been able to leverage through the right-of-way processes and the tools that they have to develop. And it's really been something that they believe, at least, it's been a really big boon to them in regards to economic development. Their sort of extreme example, I know everybody always says that and it is true to some extent, I mean, they went so far as to actually spend $3 million and purchase their own fiber optic ring around the entire metro of Columbus. And they actually offer folks dark fiber that sits in the right-of-way free if they, or for reduced cost if they want to locate jobs there. So it's been very interesting. So there are those kinds of things that certainly I'd recommend through the process that if we're doing, if we're not doing things like putting conduit in streets for the $2 it costs a foot or whatever it is, it's that kind of thing that down the road helps in two ways. We could put our own infrastructure in there, or alternatively someone else could, and we could offer that as an economic development concept. In addition to that, it alleviates the need to have to cut into the public right-of-way to get in there. All you have to do is go in tube and it's a lot simpler. So I promise to be brief and I've not done a very good job, but I'm happy to answer questions. And like I said, I could go on forever, but I just want to try to be, I just want to try to personally answer your questions if you have any.
Any questions?
You got all that?
Probably not at this point. I need to process.
Sure.
But, Rashid, can we, was there anything you wanted to add or like that?
No. We talked about basically, you know, with the economic development for the downtown and working with GGC, you know, a big cost of ours would be moving the lines and the poles.
Yeah, and that's something that, there are ways to coordinate that, that are economically more efficient for jurisdictions than the sort of the standard, okay, gosh, we need to do something, let's just write everybody a letter and tell them it's time to move it. And there are some, I'm sure this listeners, there are some interesting legal issues in there too about how that's done, but the practical reality is that I think that there are ways, especially if we have an established set of rules, rules of the road, that everybody knows what they are, not just tomorrow when something happens, but in the future, everybody knows how to play the game. And coordination is really important. And one of the things that we strive for in these documents is to make sure things are coordinated appropriately. So when the village does something, or when a utility does something in the right-of-way, there's an opportunity that if there's a trench that's open and we want to put traffic signals in, we do it at the same time. I can tell you horror stories, I don't know how many times I've got clients calling me and saying, you know, "Gosh, we just repaved Main Street." And the next thing you know, the telecommunications firms are in there and they want to open it up, and why didn't they do this a month ago? Well, because we didn't coordinate, didn't do a very good job. And so there are touch points in the ordinance documents that we recommend that have those kind of references in there so you can do those kinds of things. And I think that on the economic development front, one of the important things to understand is that, you know, technology is changing and we're going to see a lot of different and new things. Not so much with the traditional old services like electric and gas and water and sewer, they'll be the same, but I think you're going to see some wireless applications. I know I've been working a lot with some of the wireless companies who are now looking to locate just simple poles in the right-of-way to do what are called distributed antenna systems. And so you've got some hybrid things that are going to happen. And really, one of the things that we always try to make sure is that at the end of the day, if that's a technology that shows up tomorrow, but, you know, three or four, five years from now is something that nobody's using and the companies go away, we have the appropriate economic assurances that they're not going to stick us with those kinds of structures to remove. And the other thing that I think you want to do and I think it's important is for the residents of the community is you want folks in Plain City to have the best services that are available. And I think it's important that you recognize that it's my belief and my experience over time, these ordinances help you to kind of attract people because they know what the rules are and they're familiar with those. And there are additional tools in here, I think to Councilmember Perkins' point. It is an example, utility portals where you can designate portions of town as areas where you want to move to underground over time. And when there is a trench that's opened up by one provider, one provider comes off a pole line, you coordinate with everybody and everybody shares the cost. And so to your point about moving things, it ends up being a cost that's shared amongst a number of people, not just one cost because you've got one entity moving or you've got to fight each entity separately. It's that coordination. There's also other tools in there like minor maintenance permits. And one of the issues is you want folks who are there to behave well over time. And we've got some interesting concepts where if you don't behave, we'll say it this way, if you want to turn a screw or put a light bulb in, in your infrastructure, it's in the right-of-way, you don't have to come downtown and get a permit for that because it meets a certain standard. But it's because you have an ongoing permit to do that, if you are a bad actor and you don't participate in accordance with the rules, we'll pull that permit. And the next time you want to turn a screw or put a light bulb in, you do have to come downtown. And anytime the police department sees you on the street and you're doing something you're not supposed to be doing, we send you away and you've got to come downtown. And it's interesting how that, and that, by the way, that was something that was recommended by utility in ordinance negotiation. I've done just dozens of these things. And what we found over time is we keep coming up with these better and better ideas, both with the jurisdictions and utilities to coordinate on how they get things done. And I think we finally, after doing this for 15 years, arrived at a place where I think that things have been moving pretty well. We've been able to put some really nice packages together for folks, for jurisdictions, so they can do all the things that they want to do. But at the same point in time, get the service providers in and let them, and let them do their business. Anyway, again, way more than you need to know, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you.
The zoning and subdivision regulations, is that where you envision it?
Well, Councilmember Walsh, you have a, right now you have a streets section. And I think my recommendation at this point would be to probably replace that with a more comprehensive set of rules and regulations. And we'd update the costing approach now, you have set fees. And actually, under the law currently, you can't, you can't charge someone a set fee that isn't related to actual direct costs. And so we changed that model. And then we'd also, generally speaking, we recommend a scenario where you have, what I like to refer to as two buckets, two costs, if you're looking at it that way. There is a, there is effectively a permitted certificate of registration that you would issue to a utility to be there with their system. And so they would go through an approval process. And practical reality is they're today, so we're not going to deny them, but we want to make sure we have the insurance documentation, all the emergency contacts, things like that. You give them that permit and that's a permit that there's an annual fee for that based on the number of miles that you occupy. And when I say number of miles, we take all the infrastructure that they have as all the utilities and we include our infrastructure because there is a cost to having our infrastructure in the public right-of-way in regards to degradation and reduction in useful life and things like that. And so we take even our cost, I mean, our mileage, put all the miles together. And so if you've got 10 individuals out there with different systems and they got 10 miles apiece, it's 100 miles. And so when you do the math, everybody pays for their 10 miles based on, based on the math.
Evidently I didn't phrase my question properly. I'm just thinking, if the village wanted to look at this, would the normal path start up through planning and zoning and then flow to council?
I got it. You can do it that way. I think that's uncommon. We've seen that several times. Most of the time what we see is not planning and zoning because it's less of a zoning situation, it's more of control on our public property. We either see that go through different committees if they exist, if there's a, if there's a public committee like that. Most of the time what we do is work with staff and the solicitor's office and end up putting together a document that everybody agrees is ready for submission, submit it to council, do some briefing sessions with you folks after we've worked with the utilities that are out there, if there are any questions that they have, and then recommend it that way. So normally we don't filter it up through a committee occasionally, but very seldom planning and zoning.
Okay. I think our streets regulations follow the planning and zoning subdivision regulations.
Okay.
The way the Planning and Zoning Commission is set up and our local government is that anything amending subdivision regulations or zoning starts with typically, it goes planning and zoning first. Now, council could ask planning and zoning to deliberate on that and provide recommendations, but it typically takes a vote and approval, planning and zoning before going forward. So the purpose of my question just was to understand the implementation path for what you've described as it might apply to the village plan city.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just for clarification, you coordinate to write all the documents that we need, but you also work within the, with those utilities to create a plan, to build a plan?
What we, what we would normally do, it's been my experience as of this, what we would work with staff, solicitor's office, determine what exactly, what I like to call the, in this case, Plain City Village, specific issues. You folks have issues that are different from what goes on in Gehanna or Westerville or Hilliard or any other place, we've done these kinds of things. So we find out what those things are. We put together a draft document that the team, the city, or the village team in this case, believes is appropriate, right? And then we take that and we distribute that to the folks who are what I would call the stakeholders, the folks who are already out there who are going to be affected by these rules and regulations. And dialogue with them as to what their thoughts are on specifics of this and see if there are things in there that for some reason or another are difficult for them to achieve. And what I can tell you is that we normally like to make sure that that's appropriately limited in a way that makes sense. As you can imagine, in my experience, it's not necessarily always in the best interest of those folks in the right-of-way to have a comprehensive set of rules and regulations, especially if they've been operating ad hoc for a full number of years. And so we want to control that process in the sense we really want real dialogue. And I can tell you that I've been involved in these experiences where I've been in one jurisdiction and had one of the providers say, "We can't live with this." And I've been in another jurisdiction within a month and a half and had somebody say, "This is, you know, this is the best thing ever." And I'll say, "Well, you wrote that language for me over there." And so we've kind of gotten to the point with all those folks that everybody's pretty straightforward and if there are little tweaks and turns, they really help us with that. But that's what we end up with. And then at that point, we'd need to bet it through planning and zoning or through the council. Is that, is your question out there?
Chris, we're obviously looking, I mean, you're here because we're obviously looking at ways to improve our downtown. We've worked with GGC to get some ideas of what to do, have several plans in place. We're in the process of ultimately making a decision whether we go forward or so, how we do that. I'm assuming from your presentation that your end comes way before any of those processes get put in place. Is that fair?
Yeah. Councilmember, I think what we intend to do is provide you with a set of tools. So as you go down that path, so ideally, sure, you'd want to have that in place first, that would be my thought or my suggestion. Once you do that, then you know what you're going to have to do on a going-forward basis when you're planning for improvements. And so the sooner you have the legislation, the infrastructure of the legislation in place, the sooner you can address it in a logical manner so you can do the things you want to do. Is that a...
Yeah. And how long does that process take?
The process of putting a document together?
The infrastructure together.
You know, that's something that I think certainly by the end of the year we can have done.
So you would be looking at a six-month lead?
Six months in a row, I guess not, yeah, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So some, ideally, I always like to do these things and have them be effective January 1, if possible, you know, have it work. So, you know, in this case, for a jurisdiction of this size, we could, we could do a hurry-up kind of scenario and rush it as much as possible. And I think we could have it effective and in place so when we get to the first of the year, you're looking at that. And that's convenient for timing purposes, for other reasons, because we do things like, for example, recommend, require actually in the documents, there'd be a planning meeting every January between the village and those providers, those players out there, so we can coordinate those things when they come up in the spring and the summer, so we know well in advance. And so it's something that I think certainly can be done by the end of the year and then certainly something that hopefully would be effective immediately thereafter.
Okay. And what kind of cost can the village expect for the services?
And what I've recommended, and I did put together a letter, which I did send to Mr. And what I've recommended, and I did put together a letter, which I did send to Mr. Vaughn. The cost, we build these normally on an hourly basis. And, you know, it's always difficult because you never know how many questions folks are going to have, whether it's the village or the industry. But what we've recommended or what I've suggested is that I think this can be accomplished for less than $20,000. And I know that sounds like a lot, oh, and this is an important factor, I should point this out. It's always important and I'm sure that you guys should be aware of this. The money you spend to develop this ordinance is recoverable from those people who occupy your right of way. What the state has been clear on with both the legislation and the Public Utilities Commission decisions has been that the cost associated with coming up with comprehensive rules is above four costs that can be shared with those folks who occupy the right of way. So for example, if we charge you $100 back to my $100 mileage issue, right, then everyone who has a mile would be responsible. And let's say we collected back in one year, and normally we spread it over three. That's sort of a reasonable way to do it. But if it's that, if it's that $100 and everybody who has a mile, if there's 100 miles of occupancy, everybody pays a dollar, then you simply recoup that cost. Now, the only sort of sleight of hand there for, for the jurisdiction is we're in there too. So if we have sewers and if we have water infrastructure, then that's not money that we're going to give back for ourselves. Now, some jurisdictions I've done work for and done these for have actually have a water department. In fact, it's, "Okay, water department, you pay us that." But it's, it's one pocket to the other, so that doesn't, you know, doesn't really wash in most jurisdictions. No pun intended when I'm talking about water. But the practical reality is the cost associated with doing this can be folded into the project. And so that's one of the reasons we, you know, we, we think that at the end of the day, you're not only a better place on a going-forward basis, but you should be able to subsidize the cost of doing this through that process. Sorry, I should have pointed that out.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just clarification. So if what I heard is correct, if we look at the $20,000 fee, just keep it real simple.
Sure.
And we look at all the stakeholders, the village being one of them, we would figure out of that $20,000, how much of the cost would be pro-rated to the village versus pro-rated to the power companies, the gas company, the cable company, and so on and so forth? Is that, am I understanding you correctly?
Yes. And for simple math, just to walk through it, if it were, just humor me on this because it's $21,000 because I'll do it three years, like I said. If it was $21,000 and that's what the village spent at the end of the day, and there was a, so you said, "Well, we're going to, we're going to get that back over three years." You would then take $7,000 a year, and then you, let's say we had, you know, 70 miles, right? So we do that math, and then every mileage, mileage of increment would be paid back by, for its annual certificate of registration fee for those, each of those users having a mile. So inside of those users is us for certain things, whether that's traffic signals or sewer or whatever it is. But you're right. And so all those folks who are providers and occupiers of the public right of way would, would contribute towards the cost of essentially regulating, mapping, and all that kind of stuff for themselves. On an ongoing, and that would be something that after a period of time, those three years, would fall off. And so, and so you understand the way it works. On an annual basis, the cost that we spend, and again, I said there were two buckets. The cost that we spend that's associated with regulation and management and administration of the right of way that is not attributable to specific, specific construction jobs. That cost is cost that we put in there every year and we run a true-up. And so we get it, we get it in a year and arrears. It's really strange, but it's what the PUCO is told us to do. We get it in a year and arrears, but we get it back. On the construction side, what a lot of, a lot of my clients have decided to do recently is direct bill. And so if you come down and you apply for a construction permit and it has to go to GGC or an engineering firm to look at, and there's a cost of $800, you just simply understand and it's part of the permit process, you pay the $800. If the cost is $80, you pay the $80. And I think that's the most actual and direct way to do it. Some jurisdictions who have established fees will true them up, you know, if it's a $50 fee or a $100 fee, whatever the number is, they true them up every year based on what last year's costs were. But the objective at the end of the day is to try to have the village be in a position where the cost associated with the work and the expenses associated with those folks who are occupying and using zeroes out. Now, again, we're there too, so some of this is borne by us. And we're not going to subsidize or allow other folks to subsidize our infrastructure. We've got to be very clear on that. But I, I refer to it as finding money in the couch. I mean, it's, it's money today that we don't really think about in that sense. And the practical reality is, even though the services we get are wonderful, those are effectively long-term permanent easements where people are using those to do their business. And the practical reality is that there's, I don't know of any other type of business where, if, you know, we had a vacant room in City Hall, somebody wouldn't be allowed to come use it and run a daycare out of it, or whatever that may be. And the best example, and I know I mentioned this to Councilmember Perkins, the best example of that specific instance is if, if I have an all-electric home in the jurisdiction and I don't receive gas service, and the gas company does a bunch of construction and causes the jurisdiction to have a bunch of expense associated with repairing that construction or maintaining or managing it or inspecting it. As, as a citizen who doesn't have gas, I'm going to pay that through the tax base. But I don't have gas. That's a bad example, I know, and I shouldn't say that, right? So, it's a bad example, but, so, but I, but I don't have that service. And the practical reality is that if, if I'm the gas customer, the cost associated with that, that expense in doing the work in the village is best attributable to the rate base. So when I get my bill, it's in it. Not in a situation where it resides with the jurisdiction because I did the work, even though, for example, in my case, as a gas, as a non-gas customer, I don't have it. Is that, is that helpful, or did I confuse things worse?
No, I think I follow you. I wish Washington would consider that for their healthcare.
Have you seen this? Because what I'm hearing then is those costs are being passed on to those utility companies. Have you seen in your experience the utility companies then passing that cost on to the customer? In other words, do we as a village avoid those costs, but now our residents pay more?
That's an interesting question. What I can tell you is you're already paying, as a resident of the village, you're already paying some of those costs in your rate base because those jurisdictions are doing this and have done it. And the question about, does it raise my rates? I'm sure incrementally it does, but we're talking about a penny based, you know, distributed by all these folks. And so if, and I don't, I'm just making this number up, but let's say that I'm a stakeholder, I'm a provider. It has infrastructure here in the jurisdiction, and you want to charge me, again, I'm making these numbers up just for round purposes, $1,000. If that, that $1,000 divided amongst the 200,000 rate payers over 12 months is really de minimis. And those are costs of them operating their business. That, again, I've talked to some, I mean, the folks that I've had these discussions with in the past have always indicated to me that from an economics perspective, those costs are better weathered or more appropriately weathered by those folks who are obtaining the services opposed to those folks who aren't.
The enabling legislation that you first talked about, is that where the certificate of registration fee would be established? Because I don't think we have any such thing except for maybe cable.
You don't, you don't. And cable, and by the way, another nuance, cable gets a pass up to the point, up to the point that they paid. So if we were, for example, again, round numbers, if we were going to charge them $1,000 to have certificate of registration and they paid us $1,200, they don't owe us anything. If they paid us $800, they owe us $200.
Okay.
So to answer your question about the enabling legislation, all that is covered in the ordinance. So there would be a section in the code that handles all of that, details all of that. And my anticipation would be that that would be something that we would do an initial study with staff and see what the expenses are, look at the engineering bills. And again, remember, it's kind of strange. It's, you look at last year's numbers. It's, I don't like it like this, but it's what the commission, PUCO, told us to do. So we look at last year's numbers, and then every year in, in March or February, you do a true-up based on last year's numbers. So we'd see what the costs were last year. We, staff would track that. And by the way, ironically, again, back to where we were earlier, the time that's associated with the staff tracking it is time that is a cost to administering and managing the right of way, which therefore is allowed to be recouped because it's a cost of doing that business.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for that.
Sorry.
All the information.
It was good information.
All right, Council, obviously we need to have more discussion on this. Do we have time in the work session to do that?
Exactly.
Start, how should we know? Okay, good. Did you have anything to add before you move on?
No.
He likes my eyes.
I'll let you move on.
Okay. All right. Let's go to the leg pole. So Paul sent you a document that he, a draft he had put. And gentlemen, if you don't want to stay, you are welcome to move on. You don't feel like you have to think about it. All right. You received a draft. Did you really give any prep this year or?
Yeah. Briefly, I, this is not a recommendation necessarily, more than just kind of an outlining of some of the issues that were brought up and the concerns that were had and just kind of giving you a template to work with for the purposes of discussion. I know that one of the issues which was, I think, Mr. Rucker brought up earlier this evening is, and one of the things I think I forwarded to each of you in the email is, what do you do about the nuisance tests that people have every right to try to get rid of? And the conflict that we have within our own ordinance is, not that it's necessarily a bad thing. We have obviously an ordinance that says you can't discharge a firearm within village limits. So that kind of narrows the categories of how we get rid of the nuisance animals.
The firearm.
You know. You've got, you know, you have euthanasia and things of that nature. And speaking with ODNR and discussing some of the recommendations they make, you know, as far as euthanizing, we can go to some, you know, we can codify and place in the ordinance that they have to do it by some method that would be approved by the American Veterinary Medical Association. You know, I don't know. We're going far afield here over the traps. I, and, you know, also recognizing that the traps are legal. I mean, they're perfectly legal, legal to use these leg traps, but certainly it is a concern in the manner in which they're used. So there's an issue of how broad do we, do we want to outlaw them altogether? Do we want to regulate them by some permitting within the village? Notice requirements, things of that, those, things of that nature. Do we go with just box traps? And I also agree that if there is a cost, you know, if we're going to sit there and put it on the owner, that yes, you have to now hire a third party to come in and get rid of the animal that you caught in your box trap. It makes it kind of pointless, so. So those are, those are things that I kind of bring up for discussion. And I leave it up to you guys to discuss. I throw them out there.
All right. So Council, you have a chance to look over this, any thoughts you want to throw out there?
First thing I thought when John was talking was, I mean, I heard what he said about the house beside them being condemned and this was a haven for the houses. And to me, that sounded like the example of the woman who ate the fly who then ate the, you know, the spider. The problem is not the animals. The problem is the house. And if we do what we're supposed to do and either condemn the house, take it down, get rid of it, or whatever zoning regulation or whatever regulation it clearly violates, had those things been addressed, then he doesn't have those problems. So talking about the traps in perspective to that is, I don't think, appropriate. Deal with the house as it should be dealt with. Take the dang thing down if it needs to be condemned, get rid of it. That's the problem. The fact that animals moved in there, that's on us if we didn't do what we were supposed to do with this particular property. I don't see that as being the same thing as looking to regulate the, you know, the occasional nuisance that will exist. And it should only be on occasion if we don't have property that he has beside him. If people don't have that, you're not going to have these issues. So they're not the same thing.
Have you guys contacted, excuse me, the health department again?
Not since the condemned was taken off.
Okay.
Yes.
And I wouldn't disagree, but I would say we don't have a problem. Because I see skunks walking down, pouring joe coffee all the time. And I don't live near that abandoned house.
You live near another one though, don't you?
Yeah.
There's another one, yes.
There's multiples now.
And I wouldn't be surprised if downtown wasn't a haven for rats.
I know the raccoons live in the storm series.
I'm just guessing, but that's not the skunk's fault. That's our fault.
I mean, part of it is, I think, the river too. So.
Chief, you mentioned to me about not being able to move them, about if you trapped them.
According to ODNR, the ones that are classified as rabies-carrying animals can only by law be let loose at the location they're found. Therefore, because you can't take them and drop them off in your neighbor's yard, it's their problem. Or take them out to the county. You just can't do that because you're moving a rabies problem, potential rabies problem, or they can be euthanized. So those are the only two methods.
Other thoughts, Council?
I mean, the entire subject came up because we were, and I say we loosely, were opposed to the use of the particular traps that we were told that this, this individual was using. So I don't think that there we've sought to prevent the trapping of animals within the city, especially as it relates to nuisance trapping.
As I understood, the issue is principally the manner or the timing of the location and where he was using those traps in close proximity to the school. And also, you know, again, you know, an animal may not be necessarily a stray and wander across into somebody else's yard, and you don't want injury to the animals like that. Now, there's also many different sizes of these traps where there are some of these traps that, you know, the ones that he was talking about, you hunt a squirrel or whatever, a dog would have to place his foot perfectly within the center of that for the trigger of the trap. A lot of them wouldn't get them because the trap is much smaller. But they also have, you know, we're not talking bear traps. We're talking traps that could be this big and they have different sizes all the way out. Right. Exactly. So, yeah, and I agree with you that, you know, that that's the other way to go is far as regulating as opposed to outlawing it, we regulate it, say, if you're going to use these, you can't use them within a certain area or whatever, whatever council, whatever pleasure council is.
And Kevin tells me that the gentleman must have seen our write-up in the newspaper and brought me a copy of the regulations for trapping. And I find it funny because he clearly, and I guess if he's going to bring them to me, it's kind of intimidating that he follows them all, but apparently he does not. Just a quick review, I mean, he was required, anytime he set a trap, to let every resident within 150 feet be aware of the location of the trap and the fact it was there. He wasn't allowed to do it from sunset to sunrise, so without lights on it. I guess squirrels don't light lights on their traps. I mean, there are regulations that he wasn't following that, that clearly we didn't think of in this draft, but make a lot of sense.
So can, if he didn't follow the rules, who enforces those rules?
Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
So it just seems to me this is something that if he's not following the rules of legal trapping, then the, the state can in fact step in and, and I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I can honestly say I have no way to support this at all. I think it's probably one person who has not followed the rules, maybe has turned talking to from the state, might help. But if we go down this road and we say, "Well, we can't put a trap in someone's yard because it's across the street from a school." Well, can you use rat poison in this property? You know, a kid could wander across the street and eat the rat poison. And then where do you draw the line? And reasonable people have to make some reasonable decisions on this stuff. And you can't solve every problem by passing a law about it. So, I mean, we have a hard time enforcing our laws now. If we go down this road, I think what Mr. Rucker said is important. Our citizens have to be able to control rodents. Last time I checked, rats and squirrels are rodents, right?
Yes.
Rats. Squirrels are rodents, just with a glorified tail, right?
Tree rats.
I can't, I mean, I just can't support this in any way, especially as Mr. Kennedy said, he's already having a rule that could be enforced by the state if we would just let the state know. So you're asking how we're feeling. That's just how I feel.
This legislation that we drafted doesn't prevent people from being able to trap animals. It just details the way in which they can do it. And I don't, I don't understand how you don't agree with the fact that if we outlaw traps, especially around the school, that would encourage someone to use poison.
Well, I'm just saying, if you go down this road and you start taking rights away.
You mean like Ohio already has done?
Well, that's what I'm saying. They've already put limits on place. There are already rules in place for the people of Ohio. And these rules, in this draft here, we have five versions of things that would be outlawed. They're currently legal statewide. But would be illegal in our village.
Right.
So I, yeah, I just, so in fact, we are outlawing certain things.
We're being more restrictive in the Ohio code, at least with this draft, yes.
And I did read in the newspaper that the wildlife officer said that the traps are not that big of a deal. They're not really that painful.
I think he should come and demonstrate.
Go ahead. I'm just going by, well, the expert who looks at trapping every day.
I haven't called him yet, but I, I plan to.
I'm sure it's not a pleasant thing. I mean, the process is not a pleasant thing, being trapped and then held there. And so you put out of your misery, well, I blow to the head or something.
Which could be a very long time.
It could be. It could be. But according to those rules, it can't be, right?
Are you supposed to check them according to the rules, what, every 24 hours? Which doesn't make a lot of sense if you're not allowed to trap between sunset and sunrise, but anyway.
Anyone else?
We could line them up.
Any, Council, anyone else that has a thought?
With the, with the problem that Mr. Rucker described, be solved, solvable with box traps and without leg traps?
Yeah.
And I think, I think really there's, I think there was a description of some, some pretty bad behavior that was communicated to all of us by a certain party with, with the use of the leg trap. And then the fact that leg traps could be considered cruel, state limits them quite a bit. If box traps would provide the residents adequate means. If box traps would provide the residents adequate means to handle a problem that they need to address, they have an alternative.
The fundamental problem though is, is, again, this is what I throw out to everybody, is what do you do after you catch them?
Yeah.
You either let them go, or you have to.
But we didn't have that problem before. Don't we have regulations already on certain things that we can do in the village as far as trapping? Prevent any trapping at all?
No, we have nothing.
Okay.
Again, this is all kind of a three together, what, call, that's what I thought everybody was saying last week in the dressing room there.
So now you're asking a resident to take the little cage, apparently to outside the village limits and release.
You can't have it from.
So now you've got another.
That's what I was saying, you either catch them and release them on your property, which kind of takes purpose, it looks like a sport.
Yeah.
Or you euthanize it, but you can't use a firearm, you euthanize it. So disposal removal has to either going to be disposal by you euthanizing it by some method other than a firearm, or have a third party come in and take it away. And that's, that's kind of the catch 22 of all.
Could you take it outside the village property and shoot it?
Yes.
Not releasing it.
But you can't transport it.
You just said you couldn't release it.
But you can transport, you can't release it.
I'd have to look it up.
And how do you, you have, so let's say you have a squirrel in a trap, how do you, how do you euthanize, if that's the word we're going to use? Euthanize a squirrel in a trap without, if you can't shoot it, how are you going to squirrel out?
Bucket of water.
I mean.
Okay. How about a skunk?
Okay, council, let's, all right. Can we get to an answer here tonight, or do we need to think on this on our own a little bit more and come back with some suggested changes to this language?
ODNR is happy to come in here and talk to the council, if we want that, so, throw that out there as well.
I don't think we want to pass this yet.
No, there's nothing to pass. Does anyone have anything in particular they'd like to see come out of this or added to it?
Well, what, what this is going to want to see happen, you put a trap out here and you get a squirrel and you give it one of the cats.
Right. So the concern is that a trap might.
And that was, that's one of the problems with the cats. If the cats are learning how to read.
That's why the states is on the line.
Well, if this is against ODNR, how do we get them to come out and enforce it? Do you know?
Anybody could.
Anybody can call them, I'd like to.
The neighbor could call them.
They have their own officers.
They could have called them and reported it, just like.
There's a Union County officer and there's a Madison County, there's one for each county.
Okay.
And I think this goes along the line with the property. You know, we can say, well, if we did our job and people, we would have all these abandoned buildings, people knew about the rules, they followed, if people knew what the steps are when someone's violating trapping laws, they should contact the, you know, Department of Wildlife, and that, this is already their baby, they will work with this.
They were responsive to this when I called them, so they came immediately, and this is probably the first time I recall of there being this type of issue of trapping, so.
I don't think we're ready to make a decision.
So I.
Or even recommend legislation at this point.
I would say, take this back with you and give it some thought. We won't probably address it at the work session, but at the next meeting, so if you have thoughts ahead of time that you want to send out to people or give to Paul, then please do that. All right, so we're going to move on. The next concern that has come up is gun control in the park. Colleen, did you have anything there you wanted to?
No, I just knew that that was.
So the sin had, put something on, I want to make sure we had discussed it. We, it's on one of our signs, it's on the big park rule sign, and I had asked chief about it at the time when we heard that there was an issue. We can remove it from the sign, because the issue is that a concealed carry can have a gun in the park, but, so it's accurate in the way that it's on the sign.
It's, the Ohio Supreme Court dealt this issue not too long ago, where essentially after the Ohio passed the concealed carry law, basically they were establishing rights to carry concealed weapon, and with certain statutory exceptions or exclusions, where you can't have them in a police station or courthouse, et cetera, or a government building.
Here.
Here in our government building. But it did not exclude parks, and therefore you have a right to carry concealed weapon everywhere that is not excluded, and so therefore you're impinging on a right, the conflict between the local law and the state statute on the concealed carry. Now, the open carry is a different animal.
And I know Hillary addressed this not too long ago under council as well, so, because they were moved, because they had a code.
We don't have a code as it exists. The only thing there is, to my understanding, is that there was one of the bullets on the sign at the park, that our code does not restrict the carrying of a concealed carry holder from being in the parks.
So I think that's the answer, that we're just going to remove it from the sign.
If we, not to be tricky, but if we have no ordinance that actually prohibits firearms in the park, the fact that we actually have a sign, does that in and of itself violating anyone's rights? I mean, am I the only one that finds it less than desirable that my kid has to play baseball where someone has a right to have a firearm? I guess I'm not your gun-toting average American, but if we have a sign that says you can't have them in there, we never prosecute it because we have no such ordinance, is that actually a problem?
I think it probably is to some degree, because you're essentially prescribing a behavior that you're not constitutionally permitted to do. So I think you probably do have to take it off.
Actually, I think it was somebody that brought that to the village's attention, that it was not consistent with state, and was probably a concealed carry licensed resident, so.
What the sign said, without permit or something like that.
Well, there's still exceptions without a permit, you could as well.
I mean, if you're like a law enforcement officer, obviously, no.
No, any.
Any, any system without a permit, as long as it's not concealed.
Right.
And they're not disqualified.
Put your job away, hold school if you wanted to.
You can strap your six gun shooter.
Right on you.
Can I fire him up when my son hits?
No, you can't.
And I pull on it.
Yes, it is.
Want to shoot a squirrel?
One minute from the sign.
I don't recall there being a second option.
All right, council, I'm losing you, we got to stay at this here, we've got a couple more things. So for now, we're removing it from the sign. If there's more that you would like to look into, what we might be doing, we can.
Well, there are some, there are some things, if someone is in a park with a gun, they can be charged with inducing panic or something.
No, they cannot.
So if he just walked there with a shotgun.
We can't even approach them without pay reason.
What about walking down Main Street?
Walking anywhere.
No inducing.
Unless they point it at somebody, make a threat, or do something that would cause an inducing panic, but just to have a holster on your side, just like it's been done for hundreds of years, I mean, there's, it's a Second Amendment right, so.
Now, you cannot transport them in a motor vehicle.
They're within a gun rack in the back of the truck, that's in trouble for that.
Unless you have a CCW permit.
At that point, you just wait by the vehicle, wait for them to get in, right?
Yeah.
No, that's okay.
All right, so we are moving on here. BCA, let's talk about that a second. It is council's discretion who serves on BCA, and so you guys determine that, and we, tracking who's timed this up and who needs to be, who's finished and who, do we want to look for someone else, or do we ask them to sort of get that on you? And we need a way of tracking it. When Annabelle was here, she had that nailed, she knew every time it was timed, and she knew. Kelly, I had tried to get her into that mode, she wasn't as able at it because she didn't know zoning like Annabelle did, so it's something that's kind of falling through the cracks a little bit, and we need to shore it up. You, something else that I think you were saying to me is that they're supposed to be staggered years.
Right, there's always, every year, a member should be coming off of BCA, or at least their term expiring, they can be renewed, but every single year that has to happen, so you have to have her staggered out over the members, over the entire, entire membership. And so the individuals that we appointed tonight, we have to have them on a staggered term. Now, the fact that what happened last year is we had two expire in December, one happened in October, one expired in October, so, you know, somewhere years ago, we got off track and we need to back on track.
And I think it's because people leave the middle of the term and then they're pointed, and then it's all messed up.
Right, they just assume that, yeah, because it doesn't make any sense to have an October term. So it means that somewhere along the way, somebody had left in October, somebody got appointed in October to take over that spot, and then they just figured, okay, I'm on for however many years through October, yep.
And I know the mayor mentioned BCA and council, who's the one to recommend, who sits on it, but we have a similar situation with planning and zoning, we also have a similar situation with the design review board. All three are intended to have staggered terms, and the goal really is to make sure that you always have some experienced people there, that you don't have all your experienced people leave at one time.
Yeah, and administrations change, people come together, and as things get lost, if we don't have consistency, usually it's staff, and that's where that's fallen to cracks.
I saw, it's been within the last year, one of the internal phone list, an Excel spreadsheet that had council and municipal employees' phone numbers, and also had a page that showed terms of office.
It's on the X drive, and we've maintained that since I've been here, but keeping it up too is the other thing. Something happens and staff aren't aware of it, weren't informed, so how do you propose we get to that alternating thing?
So, you know, again, it depends on the pleasure of council, how you want to do it, but between Todd and.
It fails how it's supposed to begin in our ordinance and stuff.
Yeah, well, it talks about staggering, but it doesn't say.
Nobody keeps track of them.
Right, well, we, we've basically come to a point where we have three people that are out of order and we got to fix that. So Leslie, Todd, and Nick, some of them, they're just going to have to, we're just going to have to pick different end dates for them. And so, you know, that's up to you guys, how you want to do that.
I don't sit on any of those boards, it wouldn't make sense to me, it's that, I don't know any of those folks, how they act on the board, or any of the dynamics of the board. Each, whichever council member is on that board should just make the recommendations to the rest of us, is what I would think would be best. I mean, you know the dynamics of it.
I'd be happy to.
But you don't know the dynamics.
Because we have that.
Yes. How many do we have? We sit on there now?
We have five members.
So it's Nick.
Yeah, so it's every five years.
Todd.
Turns over.
Myself.
Yeah.
Brad.
Brad Ellis.
Todd's good. Oh, she said. Did you say Todd?
I only have four.
Did you say Todd?
I, yes. Nick, Todd, myself, and Brad.
Oh, I don't know. You don't?
I know it is, too. We haven't met since October, I can't remember anybody. Is it Brian?
Is it Darren Lee?
Is it who?
Is it Darren?
Is he the crossover?
He's PNC.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, is Darren a crossover?
Darren's a crossover.
Okay.
Okay.
So Darren's term, and I have it in the email, because I went, I got the information from, from John, and so I can shoot that to you, and maybe next meeting we'll actually officially vote on when the terms expire.
Is that okay to wait because of the next BCA meeting?
I think as long as they're appointed, we can figure out the end terms.
And Darren's sworn in, he's okay?
Yeah, Darren's good.
And Brad's good.
And Brad, yes, Brad are good.
And these two, okay, so we're all good.
Yeah. So we have a full composition, there's just a matter of determining the end date.
So because, because this, Jim's brought this up before, and we went through this with PNC, and we're told by legal counsel that because it gets off because of appointment, you don't have to go back and get it back to that alternating thing.
Our ordinance says it has to be staggered, so what you have to do is you have to have something, simply, it's a matter of simply appointing something mid-term to the unexpired portion of the existing term, and then when that term ends, then you re-implement to pick somebody else.
That's where it got messed up at.
That's where it got messed up, is that they just didn't do a, they didn't let the term expire.
They had two years ago, they're getting four.
Right.
And then that gets it all out of line.
Right.
So then, then somebody have the dates, expiration dates for the people in PNC?
Yes, and I have it in an email.
Okay.
And it's on the X drive that Bob was saying there, that you can access. It's, I think it's committee terms, or terms of office, things like this. That's the, those dates.
Do we have that for all the council members, for PNC and for PNF?
PNC.
Okay. Right.
It's not current, what we just did tonight.
Right.
It's, I don't know, it's a chicken. All right, are we good here? All right. All right, the OPWC legislation? Two resolutions. This is a resolution authorizing the village administrator to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program for the Maple Street Gay Street Waterline Replacement Project to execute contract as required and declaring an emergency. Resolution 1414.
Motion to waive three readings.
Second. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kizer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
I had a question, why is this an emergency again?
Because this isn't, we don't know enough ahead when the state puts it out there to be able to.
Okay. We talked about, this is the one we talked about before.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Motion to pass an emergency.
Motion to pass 1414, this emergency.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 151414, authorizing the village administrator to prepare and submit an application to participate.
It is, it's Congress Avenue though.
It's just a different.
Oh, okay. I'm missing something.
We did have two different ones.
So it is for the same thing for the Congress Avenue, Shepherd Avenue Waterline Improvement Project, and to execute contract as required and declaring an emergency.
Motion to waive three readings. Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?